I want to call to order, meeting February 25th, 2014, of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome each of you who are here in the council chambers to the council chambers. I also want to welcome those who might be watching on Channel 10, those who might be watching on their computers, those who might be listening on their computers, or those who might be listening on the radio. This is your city government, and we do hope you'll participate in whatever way or form makes sense to you. So, welcome. Okay, I'm going to ask Clark take the roll call of the council members.
Peck.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Tower.
Here.
Present six.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody to rise. Councilmember Peck will lead us in the invocation, our students will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, the students can stay here up front, or you already are. Good.
Yeah, they're prepared.
They're on top. We do want to thank you for coming down tonight and helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance. We do appreciate that. But we'd like to know a little bit more about each one of you. So I'm going to pass the microphone down, and I'll ask you to give me your name, where you go to school, what grade you're in, and then why don't you tell us what your favorite subject is at school, and why it's your favorite subject?
I'm Jack Beagle. I'm in eighth grade. I go to South Park Middle School, and my favorite subject in school is math because I like my teacher.
I'm Claire Miller, and I'm in eighth grade, and I go to South Park Middle School, and my favorite subject is science because I like to do experiments.
My name is Destiny Portman. I'm from Tippler Middle School, and I'm in grade six, and my favorite subject is social studies because my teacher's really awesome.
I'm Rachel Lee. I'm from Tippler Middle School, grade six. My favorite subject would be recess because I love to hang out with my friends.
It looks like teachers are pretty important in the classroom. It looks like having some fun's pretty important, too. What I do is, I have a certificate here for each one of you, so I'll pass these out. If we could, could we give these young people a nice hand for being here tonight? As I said before, you people are free to take off and go home and do whatever, study bath, or go home and play, and have some recess in the evening time. Thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is citizen statements to the council. The microphone is on. Somebody has already come up here. What I ask is that if you do come up here, give us your name, address, limit your comments to no more than five minutes, speak directly to the council. Cannot speak to anything that's on the agenda tonight at this point in time, and no electioneering. So I see somebody, so why don't you give us your name and address?
Lois Luki, 640 O'Koshkosh. You guys are the Magnificent Southern. Do you know what that is? Those cowboys way back? Well, anyway, I watched one night, and they didn't show these people over here, the camera, and it didn't show people here close up, or way back there, close up, and I don't think that that's democratic. So, that's one big thing, and you know, this communication thing here. I'm a little mixed up already, but if I try to read that, I'd be more confused. I had forgot my flag, but I wish there were veterans, Army, Navy, every kind of flag you can have here in this country. It's a terrible position, even if you have a million dollars, that's not enough for one year old. I had called here one night, and nobody answered, there was no message, leave a message, nothing, so I had to call the fire department or something. She said, "Is this Lois?" And I said, "How did you know it was me?" So, I don't know why they know me, but one guy in the festival today, he said, "Hi." I said, "Do I know you?" "From the council," he said. So there are people watching, even though they're probably dead, almost, from working to pay taxes, or whatever. I wish that you would hire an answering service, so that everyone gets to say how they feel in this city. Otherwise, mail directly to Steve Cummings, or to Seane Fitzgerald, or the mayor, or the city manager. Oh, I've got something, let me see. I wish that the citizens could meet one Saturday a month at the city center to handle some of these crises we have. I mean, talking five minutes is nothing, and it should be public, and everyone should be welcome to talk, even though they're working most of the time. I would like people from Madison to come, whether they're senators, representatives. One topic is health care. A person cannot afford to die today, your average person, even if you've worked 40 years at the Oshkosh or somewhere. And then I would like a discussion there at some point about this troubled asset relief program. At the library, they only gave me one sheet. He says it goes on and on and on and on. So I'm wondering why all these houses are able to get this money and make bad situation worse. God, over on the east side, you know, they're putting insulation now, they're trimming it up and all of that. Well, I hope they don't expect to earn more money yet because houses were overpriced to begin with. So this troubled, no wonder they called it troubled. The other thing is, oh, here it is, here, I forgot, I have a video camera in my purse here. I would hope that the citizens use a video camera to explain what you want to say, and or pictures, and I wish the city would have a video instead of those funny maps. It's almost too late because everything is, I don't know, out of this world. And then a cellphone. I get so mad at my sister Mary, I call her, "Please call me back." I don't hear from her until nine o'clock at night. "I have to get ready for bed," she says. Wind it up. She calls me and can't talk, and so I'm saying this cellphone is no good because you can't trace a thing. So I had thought an answering service, because doctor comes home, he's got 40 calls. What does he do? He picks three, and that's it, and the rest of the people aren't heard from. Also, I have this funny thing in the paper.
Okay, I need to ask you to wind it up at this point.
All right, this is the last. Is this all bankrupt? Bankruptcies? Well, it says public notices. All right, if that's all you let me talk, I hope we have some time for all the city in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, citizen.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Luki, in response to some of your questions about people having input to the city, on March 31st is the State of the City address. I'm sure all of us will be at that. That will be at the Oshkosh Convention Center. Administration will be there. Mark, that begins at what time again was that?
Doors open at 6:00 PM, and the address will begin at 6:30.
At 6:00 PM.
What was that?
That's the State of the City, and that is so, we welcome all citizens to come to that. All of us, our phone numbers are on the city website, that people can reach us with those phone numbers. We also have emails that people can reach us at. All of us are out and about in the community, so...
But if you don't want to return the call, you don't have to.
I don't think any of us on this council...
Would do that?
...don't want to return calls.
What was the date of that meeting?
March 31st.
Well, I don't think that's enough, in my opinion. But thanks for that.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll see you there.
Yeah. Why be dead? Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Patricia Deener, live at 1316 Broad. Come here this evening, I want to thank you people for listening and public works in regard to sidewalks not being done, especially ice. Steve did take care of a couple problems. They enforced that, they had some fines, and there are still a few more because you can't take a lack of wheelchair, or regular wheelchair. I want to make it clear, is this what Mr. Project told me? It don't matter if there's a little ice, or big ice. If it's on the sidewalk, I would think it needs to be taken care of, for liability and for the city. They said dissolve or shovel. Come here this evening, in regard to, I want to make it clear to you people, and probably I'll have to go to another committee. I did push the issue on one side of the parking of Broad Street, but this past week, or maybe we can have, over the snow and everything, we had two, we had like, five cars on each side. I'm trying to turn in to go down the road, we have people trying to get out of their driver's door to get into that treatment center, whatever it is, where they come. I am going to kind of reset, try to get it passed, make it one side of the street, I will go to the committee. I think it's a safety matter. People are trying to get out of the car, people are trying to back up, get in the stall. I think it's too crowded. And then I need to make a special announcement. I heard a gentleman retired December 31st. His name is Brad Masterson. He's a special person to me and my husband. I think he's done a wonderful job in the city of Oshkosh. He's pushed a lot of issues with the city, and all of these homes, retirement homes, low income, I think he's done a tremendous job. I wish him the best, and I hope you retire with your white Vicky. And one other question, in regard to snow. Well, you know, there's a lot of people that have snow. There's a lot of business that hauls snow away. You know, the city's trying to work with the railroad, and they're trying to be good neighbors, and the railroad guy told me the other day, he's trying to be good neighbors. You know, the city offered to cut the grass to solve some problems. Businesses don't want to haul the snow away, they'd rather put it on the railroad property. They want stones, they want to mix it into the grass. So when the city takes over and tries to cut the grass, what's going to happen? Their machinery's going to go, not work. Somebody's going to get hurt with stuff flying out. You know, people have to realize, way back in the '60s, how snow was. You had to haul it away. The city has to haul snow away. Businesses need to haul snow away, and they're using private property, and it's very wrong in so many ways. If people have businesses, make sure they haul their snow away. Don't put it on somebody else's property. It's not right. The railroad does want to be good neighbors with you people in the city of Oshkosh, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else care to come forward during citizens' comments? Seeing no one else coming forward, I want to move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of a number of items that are viewed to be non-controversial in nature. The council will end up voting on them as a whole, as a package, unless either a council member or citizen asks that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to read through all the items, and if you'd like to speak to a particular item, when I read it through, please come forward to the microphone, give us your name and address, and make your comments regarding that item. When the public has had a chance to make comments, I'll bring it back to the council for some questions and discussion, and see whether or not they, any council members want to pull any items. Okay. Approval of bills presented by the Finance Director. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from February 11, 2014. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company, Chris Young, for alleged damage to his vehicle from driving over the railroad tracks. Discovery properties for alleged damage from a sewer backup. Resolution 14-66, approval of initial resolution for special assessments, contract number 14-05, paving, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, second local street concrete paving program central city area. Resolution 14-67, approval of amendment to engineering services agreement and AECOM Technical Services Inc. to conduct a sediment sampling investigation, sediment disposal characterization for the Sawyer Creek Channel Improvement Project. Resolution 14-68, approval of agreement for professional services with Hydro Designs Inc. to assist with management of a portable water system backflow control program in the amount of $143,760. Resolution 14-69, approve Winnebago County Mutual Aid Agreement. Resolution 14-70, approval of engineering services agreement with AECOM Technical Services Inc. for construction-related services for the National Armory, National Guard Armory Area Stormwater Detention Basin. Resolution 14-71, approve intergovernmental agreement with East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission for Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment, grant funds for regional aviation aerospace business cluster development and planning assistance activities. Resolution 14-72, approve conditional use permit for motorsport racing events at Winnebago County Sunnyview Exposition Center. Resolution 14-73, award bid for Public Works Contract Number 14-04 to PTS Contractors Inc. for various concrete paving and utility projects in Bowen Street. Resolution 14-74, award bid for Public Works Contract Number 14-03 to Relico Inc. for the National Guard Armory Area Stormwater Detention Basin. Resolution 14-75, award bid for cleaning services for Transportation Department to Central Cleaning Services. Resolution 14-76, award bid for four-by-four utility work machine for Parks Department to Bobcat Plus Inc. Resolution 14-77, award bid for zero-turn riding tractor for Parks Department to Reenders Inc. Resolution 14-78, approve purchase of vehicles for Police Department from UWO's Hartford Ford. Resolution 14-79, award partial bid to Lundt Construction, contract number 13-18, Boatworks Riverwalk East Section. Resolution 14-80, rescind property taxes. Resolution 14-81, approve city manager's goals. And now I'm going to go through a number of special events, so I'll say special event each time. Resolution 14-82, UWO Foundation, UWO LGBTQ Resource Center to utilize streets for the Oshkosh Fourth Annual Chester Marco 5K Run, Walk for Suicide Awareness, April 26, 2014. Resolution 14-83, Webster Stanley PTO to utilize Hazel Street Menominee Park for the Webster Stanley Elementary Walk, Run, Play, May 3, 2014. Resolution 14-84, Terry's Bar to utilize Menominee Park for the Terry's Bar Walleye Tournament, May 17, 2014. Resolution 14-85, Graybeard Productions Inc. to utilize South Park for the Thunder in the Park, May 31, and June 1, 2014. Resolution 14-86, Kerry Muntiger to utilize Menominee Park for the Klaske Wedding Ceremony, June 7, 2014. Resolution 14-87, Cabela's North American Bass Circuit to utilize Rainbow Park for the Cabela's North America Bass Circuit, June 14, 2014. Resolution 14-88, Triton Boats Mercury Marine and the Boat Dock to utilize Menominee Park for the Bago Walleye Club, 2/22, 2014, July 22, 2014, and August 3, 2014. Resolution 14-89, Tour of America's Dairyland to utilize city streets for the Oshkosh Critterium on the Water, June 26, 2014. Resolution 14-90, Central Wisconsin Auto Collectors to utilize South Park for Central Wisconsin Auto Collectors Car Show and Flea Market, June 29, 2014. Resolution 14-91, Real Men Wear Pink of Wisconsin Inc. to utilize Reeds Diamonds Menominee Park for the Real Men Wear Pink Annual Softball Tournament, July 11, 12, and 13, 2014. Resolution 14-92, Oshkosh Yacht Club to utilize Menominee Park for Extreme Regatta, July 14 and 15, 2014. Resolution 14-93, Do Try Run to utilize city streets for the Race the Lake, August 17, 2014. Resolution 14-94, Oshkosh Flight AAU Basketball to utilize city streets for the Oshkosh Gus Makker Three-on-Three Basketball Tournament, August 22, 23, and 24, 2014. Resolution 14-95, Cabela's National Walleye Tour Outdoor Teams Works to utilize Menominee Park for the Cabela's National Walleye Tour, September 18, 19, and 20, 2014. Resolution 14-96, UWO and Oshkosh YMCA to utilize Leach Amphitheater in Riverside Park for the Oshkosh Dragon Boat Race and Festival, September 20, 2014. Resolution 14-97, approve permanent Class B license, special Class B licenses, operator licenses, and second-hand dealer licenses. Anybody want one more chance to come forward? Feel free to do it at this point. I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for questions, discussion on any items, and any items a council member would like to have pulled for separate consideration. Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to poll Resolution 14-72. I'll be voting present, as I have a working relationship with the Sunnyview Expo, and I'd like to poll Resolution 14-81, approve the city manager's goals. I'd like to just have that a separate vote.
Okay. Other things people would like to poll, or any questions, discussion?
I have a couple more questions. Mr. Rooff, on Resolution 14-71, which is the agreement with East Central Wisconsin Regional Plan, could you just give us a little more information for the community, what that plan is as far as the aviation, and the Oshkosh Park, et cetera?
Sure. The, if you recall, the Department of Defense awarded a grant to the entire area, and as the agency that was identified as the primary recipient of the grant was East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, and the city was a subaward to this grant, and our portion is for the aviation aerospace business cluster, and that's a grant of $211,000. And I've spoken long enough for Mr. Davis to come up and fill in the blanks on that, but essentially, we're just one party of several subawards of that entire grant. The grant is a little over, I believe, $837,000, I believe, is the amount for just the grant from the federal government, of which we're going to get about $211,000 of that. And Mr. Davis can talk about what the purpose of the study will be, and what the outcomes we can expect from that.
Yes, the city's been working with county, and East Central, and CHAMCO to develop a request for proposal for a consultant to take a look at the aerospace industry and how it could best operate in the Oshkosh area. This is a regional look at the potential for the aerospace and aviation industry, so they'll do an analysis of all the advantages and disadvantages of locating a business here. They also, we're also expecting them to develop the contacts in the aviation community that would have an interest in locating in Oshkosh, and develop a package so that not only would we have a plan, but we'd also have some partners that would be able to potentially create some of the first businesses at the aviation business park.
You mentioned partners. Is Winnebago County part of that, and what would their involvement be in this?
Absolutely. Winnebago County owns the portion of the aviation business park that does but the airport, so they'll have direct access to the airport with the Winnebago County land. They have, they purchased that property jointly with the city about a year ago, so yes, and they've been involved with every step of the way, and they've been represented with the airport, the chair of the county board, and the county executive.
Very good. Thank you.
Any else, any questions? Hold on. Mr. Herman?
One more.
On a roll.
Couple of those special events included, will be including closing streets. I know we had some discussion at our workshop on special events of whose responsibility it is, and how far out, and that. Have we put kind of a timeline on, because like, the Gus Makker, for example, is going to close Main Street for three full days. Just where are we at with notifying businesses, getting it out in the media so that the citizens of Oshkosh know that downtown's going to be closed off, and just where are we at with some of these, as far as notifications?
Each special event request, when they meet with the applicant, when the special event committee meets with the applicant, they go over those types of details, primarily for street closures. The police department, Matt Harris, the special events officer, deals with a lot of those issues, and we make sure that the applicant has a plan. That was something we did discuss. Some of these applicants, we have a very good relationship with, we know. For those that we don't have a longstanding relationship, those we tend to follow a little closer because we want to make sure that they follow through, especially when it's going to be closed for an extended period of time. The Gus Makker tournament works very closely with our Parks Department, so we get that out. There's a lot of publicity for it. I know that last year, we had a complaint that somebody didn't know about it. We try to do our very best to get that word out. I believe that the word was out, but perhaps some people don't see it either being on the internet, or in any of the newspapers, but we always try to dot that last i, because there are some times that we don't reach 100% of the people. But I think the Gus Makker tournament's generating some interest. The real issue this year might be because that date has gotten switched into August. It was the same weekend as Irish Fest. That was a little too much event city going on, so we stretched that out, and it's going to be in August, and I think they're expecting a greater turnout because it's not going to be as competitive with parking, and all those other types of things.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Anything that would be called? Okay, if not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus Resolution 14-72, and minus Resolution 14-81.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? See, done, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on the consent agenda, minus Resolution 14-72, and minus Resolution-14-81.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carrie, six.
Okay, we have two items which were taken from the consent agenda, which we'll take a look at on a one-by-one basis. The first one's Resolution 14-72, approve conditional use permit for motorsport racing events at Winnebago County Sunnyview Exposition Center. Any comments on that? I know Mr. Herman said he's not, he's going to vote present on that. Any other comments? Okay, we need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And I'll ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Present.
Clark.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carrie, five, one, present.
Okay, the next item removed from the consent agenda is Resolution 14-81, approve city manager's goals. Ask for a motion, a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, again, it's important to let the citizens know, Ms. Luki mentioned earlier about sometimes the citizens aren't always aware of what's going on in the community and things, and I just wanted to just read the goals one more time. These are what the council, these are over and above. I mean, Mr. Rooff gets goals all year long from the council, but these are little special goals, and I just want to read them real briefly, and then have it as a separate vote to approve his 2014 goals. Goal number one is to develop a five-year plan to reduce city's general obligation debt to approximately 70% of equalized value. We know that we need to bring in more businesses, work with our current businesses, increase our tax base, and the best way we can do that is with a good, sound economic development plan. We have money in our budget for it, and so the council, when we set these goals up, felt that it, we needed to make sure that we are monitoring the progress and, you know, whether our investments in that is the right way. So I just wanted to read them out separately and just have the council take a separate vote on it.
Any other comments on city manager's goals? Other council members? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution fourteen dash eighty-one.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie six.
Okay, that takes us to pending ordinances, and one quick change I'll make here. These are identified as resolutions, but they should be identified as ordinances, and I'll read them as such, and they'll be changed in the official record.
Correct.
Okay, the first one is Ordinance fourteen dash nine-eight, approve amendment to Chapter thirty zoning ordinance to create Section thirty dash thirty-five M, design standards for single and two-family structures. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council and ask for a motion and a second on Ordinance fourteen dash ninety-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would, I would just like to commend staff as well as all the parties that were involved in drafting this. This is a great step forward for Oshkosh to put some rules in place for our development and future growth.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I fully support what Mr. Peck said, and I think this is really a hats off to the city staff and the work they put into this. It's, congratulations. And thank you.
Just one more comment on that. Again, I'm going to support this. This was a goal that was put together for the city manager to bring this forward, and with the work of staff, with the study that was done, Dakota Group, I believe, was the name of the group that that helped us put this together. It's going to help our neighborhoods, it's going to help our neighborhood associations, it's going to help even in the police department with Neighborhood Watch, some of the issues that we may have with residences in certain areas of the of the city. So it's a quality step forward to improve our neighborhoods, and that's something that we we've all heard from our citizens, and so I'll be voting in favor of this also.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Ordinance fourteen dash ninety-eight.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie six.
Okay, Ordinance fourteen dash ninety-nine, approve amendment to Chapter thirty zoning ordinance to create Section thirty dash twenty-three point one, traditional neighborhood design overlay district. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Okay, I will bring it back to council and ask for a motion and a second on Ordinance fourteen dash ninety-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments?
Just a couple of things I want to point out. I know this has been pointed out at many of our, at several of our workshops. It was pointed out last week. When this is published, nobody's going to come knocking on your door and say, you have to do something. This is, is, only applies should these overlays take effect and and when you decide to do something to your home. Furthermore, the, the base behind this is to protect and enhance the equity that people have in their homes. So this is actually something that will be of benefit to homeowners in the long run.
Yes, Fitzgerald. Can you turn the phone off this time, please?
There had been, I know there's been some discussions over the last number of months, and at our last public hearing two weeks ago, from the Realtors Association and the Home Builders Association about a proposed amendment to, to, to put some restrictions on creating the overlay district. And I, I did have a thirty-minute telephone conversation today with Deb Leaderhouse from the Home Builders Association, and, and I, I think we came to an understanding that the, the spirit really of their concerns were that they didn't want to have one individual from outside of a neighborhood come in and, and ask for an overlay district. And I, you know, during our discussion, I think that's certainly.
Hang on, hang on, just a sec. Whose, whose phone is this?
I shut it off. It's still doing. My call.
Then I'd ask you to take it out in the hall and put it somewhere else, please. Okay, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Oh, no, no problem. But, but essentially, the, I, I think there's a common understanding of the, the spirit and of, of this resolution and the intent. I assured her that, you know, certainly, if, if that were to be a situation that would come up, I, I wouldn't support such an overlay district being put in place, but I, I think they have a better understanding that city staff goes out of their way to meet with, with neighbors and residents in an area, and that this isn't a, a process that would happen quickly and, and is a, is a process that would, would happen with a good amount of due diligence. So I, I was glad to hear that. I, I believe they've been supportive of this process throughout, and, and I think they have an understanding of, of where we stand in not putting that, that proposed amendment, and, and I'll be supporting this as it's written.
Okay. Any else? I'll make a couple of comments. First of all, there are two ordinances here. We passed the one already. We're looking at this ordinance now. The first ordinance is really kind of a, a base level set of standards. It's really a very base level to take care of the, kind of the most difficult situations in the city that are, have gotten a little bit out of hand in a few places. The second level really represents, this one really represents an option for a neighborhood that is interested in, in having a higher set of standards within their neighborhood, the option of being able to, to do that, to move that forward, bring it to the council, what, what it is they'd like to see done and how they'd like to have it done with a higher set of standards. And this would be on neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. The council's not going to come up with it, somebody else is not going to come up with it, as, as was indicated there. We think the city will be better off for it. We think all residents will be better off. Value of homes will be maintained and increased. We think that's important for the future. The second thing I would say is, this, this took a while to get on the books because we want to be very deliberate in the process. It's gone through several iterations, and not only involves staff, but it involved a number of committees, and then a special committee put together, and representatives from Home Builders Association and from real estate firms were also on that committee. It was really a very laborious process, very serious process, and Darren in particular, I'd like to say thank you to, David Buck's here also, and Alan. We do appreciate it because it took a lot of work. Dakota Group we brought in, we spent a good deal of money on that. So I think we've come to a place, it's probably not the place where everybody wants to be. Some people would like to have the standards up here, some people would still like to have no standards at all, but I think we've, we've reached a compromise in which we can move forward as a city and will be better off for it. Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Ordinance fourteen dash ninety-nine.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie six.
Okay, that takes us to new resolutions. Resolution fourteen dash one hundred, approval of a special event, Oshkosh Sawdust Days Inc. to utilize Menominee Park and city streets for the Oshkosh Sawdust Days Festival, five-k walk run, and Fourth of July Parade, July two, three, four, five, and six, two thousand and fourteen.
Robert Kiava and Alan Schmidt, on behalf of Oshkosh Sawdust Days, we do ask for your approval on this item, and we'll be happy to discuss any things you might have when it's back to your portion.
Okay. Why don't you stay up here now, then I'll, I'll get it on the floor, and then we can ask any questions. Don't go too far.
We won't.
Okay. Does anybody else want to make any comments about that before we get to it? Okay, if not, we'll bring it back, and I'll ask for a motion and a second on Resolution fourteen dash one hundred.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Now discussion. We have the representatives from Sawdust Days Committee here, so questions, comments, have people?
One question. We've gotten several complaints over the years, council members having phone calls, that upon the last day of the event, the park is pretty much trashed. What do you have in place for cleanup of the event after the event?
I think that goes back to two years ago, and what happened is the, the volunteer group that we have doing that, they had to depart the, the last night of the event, and they weren't able to complete the cleanup the next morning after everybody pulled out. This past year, they actually worked until about four PM on Monday, and we had extra dumpsters brought in on Sunday to accommodate that. So I would be surprised to hear there was that issue, and I would, actually, myself, I was there on Monday with a group of people doing some of that final cleanup with the other crew. So I think that goes back to two years ago, and yes, there was an issue, but, so we addressed that for two thousand and thirteen, had extra dumpsters there to clean up, and extra personnel on the Monday to clean up and make sure we leave the park as we found it.
And then just one other question. There's an exemption in there under A granted to all dogs in the vendor camping area?
Yes.
Are those dogs on leashes at all times, or are they?
Yes.
In the vendor area allowed to roam around?
They are not. That is one of the requirements within our contract. We actually were provided language by the Winnebago County Health Department prior to last year's event that we updated. It was actually a fairly significant paragraph that they provided us with, which laid out care of dogs and being on leash, and that they have to provide the paperwork for rabies and registration in their hometowns that we then keep a file of and have available, either for police or the health department if needed.
Okay. Very good.
If I may say, um, excuse me.
Excuse me, just a sec. Can you please take that out in the hall, put it somewhere else if it doesn't work to turn on?
If I may say that most of the dogs that are with the vendors stay in their trailer or their area, they're not really visible during the whole event. The dogs that are down there are not under our jurisdiction, and you would agree to that, that we have people bringing dogs in. And I know that happens in the park other times, but Sawdust Days is very, we're very strict about that, and those people, they live there, so they, they keep their dogs totally under control. They, they really don't bring them out when the public is there.
Yeah, it would be in the morning, and it's usually, you know, restricted area, and we also do provide a collar tag. It's essentially a wristband that you or I would wear, and that we have them put that on the collar to identify them so that the, the police then know that, that is a, an animal that is with, somebody associated with the event.
Okay, very good.
And you know, it's really hard because you don't really want to tell people something about having their dog in the park. No, the dog shouldn't be in the park, but, you know, it's not under our control, so we leave it up to the police department and our security to handle that if there's a dog in there without.
Sure.
Identification.
Sure. Okay. And just one further question. Last few years, obviously, you know, there's been some issues with financial and payments and, and those types of things. This year, obviously, you came forward very well and took care of those, those issues. There are three, three separate payments. I think there was a question, whether they, the dates are right on the payments, but that being said, what, what do you have in place this year to make sure that you can either pay it all at one time, or that you'll be making the installments, and, because it is a, quite an outlay that the city has to pay out for, you know, police and fire and, and, you know, there's, there's quite a bit of money involved.
Absolutely.
In this case, and I'm just kind of curious for the citizens that.
Sure.
Because the city is also, you know, first off, the parade is, is through the Patriotic Council, that's not actually through you, right?
It, the.
No, I'm sorry.
It's part of your application, but it's really.
That's incorrect. The Sawdust Day, I mean, the Fourth of July Parade is under Sawdust Days auspices, and the, they have changed personnel, so we had a little bit of mix-up with about having a map there for them. They've always been there, but that's, that really is not Oshkosh Patriotic Councils of Vietnam veterans.
Okay.
And so that, that's really a little different issue.
And we don't charge for that, for any services that we provide, because that's under our, our special event? And then the fireworks is festival food and the City of Oshkosh, correct? You're not, I mean, you're, it's part of your event, but there's no money from your organization going towards the fireworks, correct?
That's correct. And then, so I can answer the first part of your question. What happened, and our apologies for it, what happened in two thousand and thirteen is your invoice is literally one of the last ones to come forward, and we had intended to pay it all at once, and unfortunately, we had a couple of vendor payments that were late in coming forward. We thought the money was going to be there, that we could make one payment, when we understood that that wasn't going to be possible. We sent the first installment, which was a little more than half of what we owed, that was about thirty days past the due date, and then as those monies finally came in, we made the final two payments to make us whole on the approximately twenty thousand dollars that was owed for city services. So we've made some changes now for two thousand and fourteen that will allow us to get those monies in on a timely basis. Actually, it's going to be on a daily basis during the event, and so we will have that money and would intend then to, to pay the invoice.
Okay. I appreciate, I appreciate your committee and your, the work of your committee to, you know, adjust where you saw there were some issues and concerns, and so as a council member, I appreciate that, because I, I remember a couple of years ago, it was kind of a tough, tough situation for everybody.
It was.
And so I, I appreciate the work that you guys have done to cause those gaps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I just have one question.
Mr. Cummings?
I've had a lot of complaints from citizens that they can't use their park during Sawdust Days. A lot of complaints, you can't launch a boat at Millers Bay during Sawdust Days. You got what I'm saying?
No, I, I'm sure there are some people.
Have you thought about moving it to the fairgrounds or another location?
We have not considered that. I, we, I would tell you that the participants in the event, I think the public that comes, as well as all of our vendors and service providers, love the location. You know, I think the fairgrounds serves certain kind of events. We'd like Menominee Park with the lakefront, the History Village, you know, and what they're promoting, you know, kind of going back to the days when Oshkosh was founded or earlier, that's on the east side of the park. I don't think those kinds of things fit well at a fairgrounds-type setting. It, it would change the event entirely, and I can't tell you how many people we have come from outside the area and tell us how beautiful the park is and think what a great setting it is for the event. So I, I would say to you, no, we have not considered that because we, we think our event is a perfect fit for the community park that is Menominee Park.
And, if I may say, you know, we've been there for forty, this'll be forty-three years, and I think that the people in the area have been behind us.
got what I'm saying?
No, I, I'm sure there are some people that...
Have you thought about moving it to the fairgrounds, or another location?
We have not considered that. I would tell you that the participants in the event, I think the public that comes, as well as all of our vendors and service providers, love the location. You know, I think the fairgrounds serves certain kind of events. We like Menominee Park with the lakefront, the History Village, you know, and what they're promoting, you know, kind of going back to the days when Oshkosh was founded or earlier. That's on the east side of the park. I don't think those kinds of things fit well at a fairgrounds-type setting. It would change the event entirely, and I can't tell you how many people we have come from outside the area and tell us how beautiful the park is and think what a great setting it is for the event. So I would say to you, no, we have not considered that, because we think our event is a perfect fit for the community park that is Menominee Park.
And, uh...
Other comments?
If I may say, you know, we've been there for 40, this will be 43 years, and I think that the people in the area have been behind us. In fact, some of them rent out their driveway space for, for people to be able to park and go there. So I think we have such a beautiful park, such a beautiful setting, and I think that if you have complaints, I would be surprised. I feel that Sodas Days has started out to be a community festival, and that's what we're doing. It's a free community festival for the City of Oshkosh, and I don't know of anybody else who does that. And we work many volunteer hours to make this happen, and so I hope that you will support us as you have in the past, and we appreciate all the support. I know we've had some difficulties, but that's what goes with an event that's growing and changing and being a little bit different. So if we can do anything to help this out, I'd like some input, some significant input, to just say that people called up and said is not exactly something we can address. So I guess that's, you know, difficult for us. Don't you agree? Difficult for us to address an issue that we're not specifically able to take care of.
And I would say in addition to that, I think it's no different than, you just had the discussion about, you know, other events. Gus Mack, you're closing down city streets. That's not convenient for some people, too. I mean, people that want to shop on Main Street, you know, there are other events, you know, there's a one-way loop in effect during EAA. That doesn't serve us, all your citizens that live out in that area, I'm sure. You know, we could look at any number of events that are held that, you know, there's going to be some impact, and ours may be a little more because we're a five-day event. So, you know, we've tried to make as many accommodations as we can, and, you know, there's a very large portion of the park that is still open and available. I mean, everything north of Seaworth Trail, that whole area of the park is available, and the east side of the park, including Little Oshkosh, the zoo, the amusement rides that the park offers, those things are all open and available, the bathing beach. So, you know, I understand there are some portions, but there are certainly other boat landings throughout the city, and the county parks, too, that people can use. And my guess is there are other events, too, when softball tournaments are held. There's probably limited parking for people with boats in the double-long stalls. So I think anytime you have a special event, there will be some impacts, and you're going to get some calls on some things. Again, we've tried our best to mitigate those over the past five years or so, and we've done a lot of things with input from the city departments, hopefully to make those things better and less of an impact on people.
And the other thing is that Sodas Days was founded on the fact that we were promoting nonprofit organizations, as I've said many, many times. And the thing is that there's nothing we could do that would satisfy everybody. There's nothing in the world that we could do that would satisfy everybody. But we have certainly addressed every single issue that has ever been brought before us, and we hope that we have been able to make that better. We understand, you know, that the financial thing was an issue in the last couple of years, but we're coming back. We had a couple tough years, and we don't have an abundance of money. We, Sodas Days was not developed to make money in and of itself. Sodas Days was developed to have a community festival and to allow nonprofit organizations, like veterans organizations, and we have, what, five churches that come down there? So we are not in and of itself formed to make money. So we do the best we can, and like I said, like he said, we have changed our business practices so that this will not happen again with the city. It will not happen again with the city. I also write the checks, and I can guarantee you it will not happen again with the city.
Mr. Clark?
I would like to thank you for coming tonight and standing in front of us and in front of all of our citizens, and owning a mistake and willing to grow and change as the needs of your festival and the needs of this community change. Businesses, business was tough for everybody the last couple of years, so I appreciate your willingness to change and continue in dialogue with us and the community to really meet the needs of the community. So I thank you, and I hope you have a good festival.
One last, I'd concur with the comments that Councilor Clark made. One thing is that any promotion, marketing, or whatever that you do, that if you note that there will be fireworks involved, that that is duly noted as the festival foods fireworks?
Absolutely.
Because I know, I think last year there were some, some people were asking me, you know, because it was still kind of a little...
I think we made it generic last year, so that...
Okay.
Yeah, because we weren't...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because festival food is, you know, and then, too, is also, you know, I mean, it is the city...
Well, and they were our partner.
Yeah, well, and the city's all, no, the city's the other half-partner in that.
Well, and it was a little, a little tricky change, and so we definitely still put festival food in our advertising. We give them a lot of free advertising at this point because of the fact that the city is, you know, partnering with them, and, but that's to promote Oshkosh. That's to promote the area. So, I mean, that's what we're about, and, you know, a lot of volunteer hours that go into all this, and so we thank you for your support. And, you know, we definitely will make sure the festival still gets advertising through our venue, even though we really are not co-partnered with them. But we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, the one comment I'll make is that the fireworks will be July 4th this year.
Festival food fireworks show.
So everybody is aware of that, so we are aware, so folks at the festival are watching also.
Marlin's watching, making sure, and he's writing...
Marlin, it's on the 4th. You can print those T-shirts up now.
Friday.
And the bank.
Friday, and everything else.
Friday, July 4th.
When Mr. Peck said that, I was like, okay, I got it. July 4th, Friday, July 4th, no question.
Okay, so...
Rain date?
July 5th. Yeah, we, rain date, the 5th.
No, it won't be any...
No rain?
No rain.
There you go.
He's got a direct line for the weather.
No hot weather. We can handle cold.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other comments, I'll ask Clark to take the roll call vote on resolution 14-100.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 14-101, approve special Class B license, licenses. If I'd like to come forward. Seeing no one come forward to that, I'll bring it back to the council and ask for a motion second, resolution 14-101.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, I'll ask Clark to take the roll call vote on resolution 14-101.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried six.
Okay, that takes us to council discussion, direction of the city manager, and future agenda items. Future agenda items. We'll have a workshop coming up on April 22 with Neighbor Works. It'll basically be coming to report on the work that they've been doing and what they hope to do, so that we'll be a workshop, an interactive workshop. Any further comments on that, Mr. Roloff?
Not on the Neighbor Works one. The next one, I just want to have a little comment for it.
Okay, well, the next one is a workshop to discuss special event policies on May 13.
The staff has provided me their final draft, and I believe that by the end of the week, I'll be able to provide that to council. So we're going to get it to you three months before this date. Quite honestly, I think you're going to be pleased with what you're going to see. We had a very extensive workshop with the council a couple of months ago. I'd like your feedback. We may not necessarily need a workshop. We may be ready to go with this. Staff's put a lot of time into it. There are some policy issues, but for the most part, staff's given some clear recommendations on where they think certain areas lie in terms of various policies that were discussed at the workshop. So I appreciate any feedback you can give. I almost think that the workshop may be a moot point. I think what discussion you may have, you can probably do in the context of a regular council meeting with very little, you won't need 45 minutes to have a workshop for it. So we'll get it to you and get your feedback, and welcome your comments before we bring it to the council.
So you're going to send us like a draft change in the policy before?
The draft report. It's a draft report, and I think that really will be the makings of what the, any changes would be. But it's pretty specific on things that they believe would be appropriate for council to consider change.
And again, you're asking for feedback, so if people think that there's a lot of work and want to ask some questions. You still have a marker in there on the 13th.
And that was the idea. We got it marked on the 13th, but if you're satisfied with it and ready to go with it, we can put it on an agenda...
Or with only minor changes or one, two.
Yeah, minor changes, I think you might be able to do in the context of a regular agenda item. But I'll welcome your thoughts on it.
Okay. Any other workshop things for future, people have in mind? If not, I'm just going to mention one thing. It's the only place really to do it. It's kind of a special week for Mr. Fitzgerald. He's just had his 40th birthday yesterday. So on behalf of all the people to your left, not to your right, but all the people to your left, all the way around here, this whole group over there, too, we'll welcome you to the North of 40 group.
Thanks for making it public, putting it on the record.
So anybody, everybody, Sean is now past 40, so...
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all downhill from here, Sean.
Trust him, all the seniors it is.
He can check out this group and make his own decision. Okay, citizen statements to council. A second opportunity for people to make some comment about the city, positive or negative, depending on what your perspective may be. If you'd like to make such a comment, please come forward to the microphone, give us your name and address. Limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Speak directly to the council, no electioneering, and speak to nothing that's already been talked about on the agenda itself. Anybody else like to come forward? No one's coming forward, so I'll take it back to the city manager, announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a memo in the agenda packet regarding proposed storm sewer outfall at Marion Road. We took a look at some options here, and we believe there may be a benefit to catching some storm sewer flow that goes actually out the Jackson Street, catching it at Marion Road and taking it directly to the river. It might help relieve some of the sand, the storm sewer that's actually been constructed last year and will be constructed north of us on Central Avenue. So we had AECOM, asked AECOM to give us a proposal, and we believe that the savings we've gotten from some of these projects that we've already done, as well as last year's project, will be more than enough to pay for doing this and actually get more value out of what we built in the past year. So we've got that going with AECOM. I thought I'd put on the agenda the, just the item about frozen water laterals. That's been a big issue going on, and certain areas of the city are more susceptible than others, but it's, we've got some frequently asked questions on the city's website under the hot topic session. Encourage people to look at that. I think most people know from talking to their neighbors, if they're more susceptible than others, keep an eye out for those types of things. Look for the telltale signs. If your water's running slower than usual, you may be at risk, and that may be put you in a point where you want to run the water pencil-thin through a water faucet, probably as high in the house as you can possibly go, and then keep that running. If you have any concerns at any time, please call our Water Distribution Division. They're not a 24-hour-a-day operation, but it seems like they are these days. Our folks have been working tirelessly on so many different issues, and my hat's off to Bill Gens, Bob Johnson, and everybody involved with the Water Distribution Division. And when the water main breaks, the street division's out there. When they're not pawing the streets, they're digging up water mains for our folks to fix, and no area of the city is immune from that. There are some patches all over the city that you're seeing. That's just a function of where the frozen water mains are occurring, and just with the way the weather's been. I would love to tell you that if we had a break in the weather, that this problem would go away, but as the ground begins to thaw, we expect that we'll have more water mains possibly breaking. That's just through the freeze-thaw cycle that happens. So when it freezes, we have a problem. When it thaws, we'll have a problem. So Dave's folks are standing by, knowing that they will, they will be working around the clock, literally and figuratively. So...
Mr. Roloff, just on that note, if the citizen has to run their water, should they be notifying? If they suspect that they're going to have a frozen lateral pipe or suspect that, are they to notify the water department and that? Because there was, when the, it went out, there was a notice that they would get a reduction in their bill, water bills. So I think they need to, if they suspect that their pipes are going to be R-freezing or that, shouldn't they contact somebody?
If we put a request into them to run their water because we're concerned about frozen water mains, by law, we're required to provide some type of credit for them. If it's just as a precautionary measure that they're taking because they're concerned that their lateral itself could freeze, then that's something that's going to be on themselves. Quite honestly, it is a waste of water. It will cost them a little bit of money, but it's cheap insurance compared to what they could have if they had a frozen water lateral.
That being said, if they suspect that, could they contact the water department? The water department would come out and kind of do a little bit of a test form or inspection or something?
We would, anybody has a question, call the water utility. We'll do some investigation.
And the phone number is?
Oh, come on.
I think it's 232-5330, but I'm not sure on that.
I will check our frequently asked questions right here, so...
I just wanted to echo Mr. Roloff's comments about the dedication of the staff. These guys have been, these staff members have been working so hard and at all hours. I've been seeing them drive past my place of employment and my house constantly with all hours of the day and night fixing these and addressing people's concerns. So I want to say thank you to those staff members and echo Mr. Roloff's sentiment.
Not to mention being out in below-zero weather and getting soaking wet.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, the number is 232-5330. So call our Water Distribution folks, and you'll find them. So thank you. And that's all. Oh, and Mr. Peck would be looking at me. He plugged State of the City last week, or two weeks ago. State of the City, once again, Monday, March 31st. Doors open at 6:00, presentation at 6:30. I appreciate the council members who have already done their video section. The mayor's encouraging you to wear your new golf shirts if possible for the video, but certainly, I think the mayor is hoping that you'll all have your golf shirts on for the...
I don't call them golf shirts. We didn't get them to play golf. I just want to make sure that they're not...
Well, we didn't get them to play polo either.
Play golf for them, is that what you're saying?
They're just pulling, he told those shirts that are identified as...
Your blue shirt.
As council members.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? If not, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.